So it's about six o'clock on Thursday, August 7th, and I'm gonna call the regular select board meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. First thing is, set a just agenda. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda? Alright, we roll with what we got. Next communication from the audience. Anybody here to discuss anything that's not an item on our agenda? Okay, moving along. We need to approve minutes from the last time, which was July 10th?
Motion to approve for July 10th. Minutes as written.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Good. All in favor of approving the minutes as written? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries? Okay, next, road foreman report. Come on in.
Thank you.
Hey, how are you?
Mr. Fadden.
Yes. So it's been a while since I've been here. As you notice, sidewalks are almost empty. I think we got like maybe another two more sections to do. And then everything will be done down through there. If we got one more day, winter's end, and that will be done. We made pretty good progress, I think, on doing meter pits. I think we've got seven in Silver.
Nice.
So I think about a week or so ago, I think we got another, a lot more pits that we ordered.
That came in?
That came in.
Okay.
So I think we've got another six more to do up around the loop area, up on.
Wow, is that many? That many?
Yeah, that was the bulk. Everything else is just sprouting here, here, and there for a while. So we did that. So we hope to get back on to that next week. Like I said, hopefully we'll have that done, the sidewalks. We finished up our road grant for Elton Mackville area from the Black Dog Scott Road. So that back road grant is complete. We should be starting up on Tucker Brook after doing part of the, another grant. Plus, they have the mitigation work for up there that we need to do. I think Opie probably said something about the pit anyway, about all the crushed stone that we've had up there now.
He hasn't said too much, so go ahead and give us an update.
So anyways, so they came, came in, crushed all the stone up there for us. So we got about, I think it was a little over 3,000 yards of six to 12 inch limestone. And I think it's worth around 2,000 yards of the three inch dense grade. So that is, and I went up there today with blasters to show them the area that Opie was thinking about doing another blast for. Been doing that. See, been doing a little bit of spot grading, but not really full grading because it's still too dry. Chloride just will not work in this weather for us. So I think that's about it. All right, roadside mowing, that's all complete. Thank you. So that was done this week. So that's all completed and done for Center Road. I think everybody's happy with the outcome of that. That's all done paved. Lines were painted yesterday.
Yeah.
Up through, through there. I think that's it.
In recent years, you guys have also rented machines to do, tractors with mowers to do, to like mow pushback? Is that on the docket for this year or not?
Not by the law, no, because it was a lot, 12 grand. I think we spent, unfortunately.
And so last year, we did, we did the tractors and our guys did the roadside mowing.
Right.
And the cutting back.
Okay.
And so this year, we did just the roadside mowing.
Okay.
Last year, we got cut short to the flood.
Right. But we probably oughta get on, maybe it's next year, get back on doing mowing to push back the.
Yeah, we had them do eight hours for 10, 10 hours.
10 hours, 12 hours.
Yeah, they had some on Bell Free and think they were gonna hit Bayway Hazen Road up towards East Sager Way. Because that's, that's the area that they had left to cut.
Okay.
After they got done the build here yesterday, so they were heading back that way to finish. They said, well, you might as well push roads back that way while you're out there.
Okay, so they did some of them?
Yeah.
Okay, good. The other, this is a small thing that I noticed walking down. The sidewalk that's kind of below the police station is, is kind of overgrown with Japanese.
Yeah, go on, go on, go on, let's go. Yeah, that's gonna get hit before school's to hold.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, miss, anybody else? Thank you. Next up, Harwood Police Department report, Mike Henry.
So starting off, some of our radar signs that we have out there. Right now, we have three portable signs that we get out there. Right now, they're set up on Kirk Street and East Hardwick, set up on West Hill, and then up on Center Road. So the East Hardwick, their organization has been looking at getting more signs for themselves. They applied for grant, apparently got $2,500 toward one. So they're gonna be working on getting one to put up there themselves. And we're just working on anything else as to go where it's gonna go, whether it's a solar battery operator. So the battery operator ones last about two weeks. And we gotta bring battery, take the batteries out and charge it for like two days and then put them back. So it's just a little bit of work, but we need to be those areas where there's a campy and you can't get sunlight down for, for solar. So everything else, I'll be able to see if we'll be working. Personnel, start with the good news. We have Joe Donahue, who is just recently got done with his field training. 300 and some hours of field training, he's done that. So he'll be working, he's gonna be the level two, working with somebody. And we did, we have another person that we did hire that will be going to the Level Two Academy in September. Name is Ariana Morris. So she'll be going to Level Two, and then hopefully in February, going to Level Three Academy. So we started with her at some point. For the bad news, Robert French has taken a different position with another department. So we're gonna be losing her. Yeah. So we're trying to build up, but it's difficult.
Which department?
Morristown.
So it can't be part of the contract that they come in, they go into training on, that they have to work for?
It, it was kind of a, it was, it was said, but we didn't, we didn't actually do a contract with them. We asked for a two-year commitment.
Mm-hmm.
And obviously, they didn't get the.
They don't bother to honor it.
Right, right. So we might have to do something right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When does that take place? When does that go into effect?
Well, we're still in details on that. When that will take place, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
I mean.
Yeah, I mean, you put a lot of time into making that happen and.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So that's where we are.
I mean, we kind of understand if people come and they work here for a couple, three years, and their life circumstances change and they need to move, but to come here, get all your training, and then jump.
And not even start.
Right.
It's, yeah, seems like that shouldn't be. Yeah.
Yeah, not so good.
Yeah. We'll add that in the future here.
Yeah.
Huh. Well, alright, anything else?
I think that's enough for now.
Alright, well, thank you for all you do. Alright, so moving along. Item one, select board to discuss throwing uptown highway 316 off North Main Street next to 283 North Main Street. And then, Tom, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not all of it. It's just the, it's act, because of a section of town highway 316 that's west of North Main Street, right? Does it?
That, that driveway there, just one red school there.
Yeah, I'm just thinking though, when I looked at the town highway map, it, I think Wakefield is also town highway 316, but maybe I'm wrong.
It's not what I found, but I mean, that's part of why we introduced it tonight, to have, start having the conversation and bring it to you next month, next, at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the newest map I could find was 2015, V-Trans website, so.
Okay. But, and that will be, we'll clarify that.
Right, we need to clarify exactly.
Yeah.
Yep, but, so that's, I mean, it's .03 miles or something, it's.
Yeah, it's essentially a.
It's, and it doesn't really exist on the ground unless it's the driveway.
It is the driveway.
It is the driveway.
Right.
Yeah.
That was, it probably was part of Wakefield Street way, way back, because it wouldn't reach Red Cross.
Before Hazen was built?
Yeah.
Yep. So, I mean, personally, I don't have any problem throwing it up and initiating that process. I don't know how anybody else feels, but it seems like we oughta.
Yeah, it's a long process, so we should.
Get it started.
Yeah, we'll have everything green next.
Yep.
That's it. It's just they, the owner, the new owner wanted to continue with, wanted to start the process.
Yeah.
He may, he's supposed to come on, but I, he's coming on at 6:20.
Yeah.
And the state had already asked us to take it out of our mileage.
Yeah.
So, so, so nobody has any objections to starting.
Carry on.
Great.
Yep.
So next month, you'll have the resolution to start.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. Next is item two, select board to consider approving the submission by community development coordinator of an application to MTAP to support the hiring of Heather Carrington to work on two CDBG-DR applications. And this is, Tracy's here. Do you want to speak to that, Tracy?
Please bear with me, because remember I was talking about the nesting dolls grants? I don't remember, so I'm revisiting. Report from the Department of the Dentistry Department. We need to do that logo again, and we did that tonight, and I apologize. So what I'm doing is I'm applying to the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board's Rural Economic Development Initiative's grant program to, to support the hiring of Heather Carrington to work on two different grants for us. So this is the ready program we talked about before. They need us to have the, you know, the proper authorities approve my application to this program. But there are two different funding sources that they actually might use to support our payment of Heather. And I only asked for ready approval from you last time, but they actually have access to municipal assistance, municipal technical assistance program money as well, and they might want to throw some of that at us. That requires its own approval. And I apologize, I didn't know they were gonna use that funding last time we came to. So they also need you to approve the two projects for which Heather will be bringing the grants. And those two, if you remember, these are both, it's a disaster relief program. These are our two projects. The one planning project in the downtown area is to develop a scoping study in the river corridor there to look at potential flood mitigation work that could be done in the future to protect our downtown. Jump in anytime, I don't have this quite right.
No, I, you're very great.
The second project is what, is an implementation project, as far as they're concerned. And that is a flood, I mean, yeah, flood plain restoration project downstream south of the confluence of Cooper Brook on the other side of the river and municipally owned land there. So those are the two projects we're going for CDBGDR funding for. Heather will be applying, doing those applications for us with a lot of support from Kristen and some from me as well. And this is my request to go to the ready program to get funding to support Heather's work. Using both ready funding and MTAP.
Okay, yep.
Sorry.
Yeah?
Can I just say so moved?
So, no.
Not yet.
So we need to, but I think the motion that would, would be nice to, if someone made, make a motion to allow me as select board chair to sign a letter supporting everything Tracy just said.
So moved.
Okay, second.
Alright. Any other discussion? I think we want it to happen, so this is what we need to do, then this is what we'll do. Alright, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, so, and you have the letter I can sign?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And I'm so sorry about that. Thank you for revisiting it.
No apology necessary.
Yeah, that's fair. And, do, 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 do. Next is item three, select board to consider appointing Peter Moskowitz, Mosk, Ken Moskowitz for a three-year term, and Joe Nudel for a two-year term, the Hardwood Conservation Commission. And we had letters from both of our packets. Either, either of these folks here?
Joe's gonna try to come, I'm wondering if he is just not here yet because we're early, we're out of schedule. But Peter, I don't believe he's gonna be able to make it.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion about nominating Peter and Joe, or appointing them to the Hardwood Conservation Commission? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
The board, the board is full. We had two people that left and didn't renew, and we had two on their fault.
Nice. We do, we still have openings in other positions. If people are watching.
Development review.
The development review board is looking for people, so reach out to your friendly town manager's office and they'll connect you. Next is item four, select board to hear from Rural Edge Executive Director Patrick Shattick about various properties in the town managed by Rural Edge. Welcome, and thank you for sending information ahead. That's really helpful.
Thank you. Well, I'm joined tonight by Reo Worthing, who is the Director of Asset Management for EverNorth. EverNorth is one of the general partners in multiple of the properties, and I have some materials for you. So I have both a copy of the report I provided you, information on our homeownership center, and information on our SASH program. Because we're really able to provide lots of services focused to Hardwick that, that previously didn't have such robust offering. But you'd asked some questions about the properties, and I sent you out a report in advance trying to summarize what, what we've been doing and what we've accomplished. Sort of what we took over in, in November, but to fill folks in. In 2024, the Loyal Housing Partnership started talking about their portfolio, their continued operation. They ultimately entered into discussions with both Rural Edge and Downstreet Housing about their portfolio, and we, we set about examining the properties with the idea of possibly taking them over. So we evaluated the properties earlier in the year. There was a lot of analysis of the needs, of performance, what we could offer. At that time, the property management company was planning to continue on. So in June, there was a vote of the membership to approve the transfer of the Hardwick assets to Rural Edge, and then LHP would merge with Downstreet Housing. So we serve, the Rural Edge serves the Northeast Kingdom, we're the regional housing development organization. But at one point, because the Loyal Housing Partnership had, had had a smaller footprint and really wanted more area, 30 years ago, there was an agreement that sort of said, LHP would have Hardwick. So it was decided that we would take the Hardwick map, and then LHP would merge with Downstreet. Shortly after that vote was made, the Third Party Property Management announced that they were going to cease operation by the end of the year. And as we were planning for then a January 1 takeover, for us, it was 100 units. For Downstreet, it was about 260 units. Things happened. And ultimately, in November, we were notified that, in November, that property management company wasn't going to have any staff, and could we come on in December? And so we took over in December, earlier than expected. And really, from what we'd seen in the beginning of the year to what we took over, were quite different. There were lots of vacancies, there were over 20 vacancies. Units that had been vacated hadn't been turned over or ready for the next household. There were supposedly very few open work orders or repairs needed, but when we spoke to tenants, there were hundreds of items that hadn't been addressed. There were evictions that had been started, and then no further action had taken place. So we had households who hadn't paid rent for prolonged period of times, or had behavioral issues, violations, other violations of the lease that were really causing issues within the developments. And then probably the biggest thing is in November, there was an oil spill, 300 gallons, at the eye of South Main Street, which required that building to be vacated, and, and became a real challenge. So that is when we stepped into December 1st and took over. So it sort of highlighted what we've done. You know, it's important to note that we have not taken ownership yet of the properties. Part of that is because the oil spill and some other issues needed to be addressed before that. And also, some of the properties are, have the involvement of USDA Rural Development, which with changes at the federal level, have seen dramatic shifts in their staffing. And to get them to approve either a transfer of the, with the general partner, or what's called a simple transfer, is very, very difficult. So we are working through that. Currently, there is one person in Kentucky for RD who handles these for the entire country. So that has really delayed the transfer. But we have been acting, you know, as, as owner and with ownership interest in the long-term sustainability of these developments in mind. So we've, the oil spill, ultimately, because it was considered an environmental issue, insurance coverage was capped at $25,000. So we sought and got funded to both remediate that and rehabilitate the building. Due to the design of the building, the oil tanks are on the first floor, but pump up to the boilers on the second floor. And so when that oil spill happened, the failure occurred on the second floor, which really caused a dispersal of oil all over, including the structure. So to remedy that, we actually had to temporarily shore up the upper floors of the building, remove part of the structure, the entire mechanical room floor on the second floor, and take all of that out and reconstruct. So it has been very expensive and intensive. Our goal was, of course, to find places for the residents, so we did relocate all of the residents. Four of them opted to go to other places permanently. One person wanted to go back, so they chose to stay in with family. And we were able to get the clip joint back in and open in 60 days. Those, those repairs are now complete. Certificate of occupancy was granted by the state last Thursday. As of Tuesday, we had four households moved back in. And tomorrow, an ERV system, which helps with air recovery. It's actually a booster system, will be finished being installed, and that will allow us to take down the temporary wall and the clip joint. We'll have all of their space by Monday. So excited to see that. At the same time, we found out that 143 Highland Avenue had severe issues with all of the internal waste lines. So they, the cast iron lines were actually rotting. So we got money for that. At the end of July, the households there were temporarily relocated. All those waste lines are being replaced. And those folks will be back in their units by the end of the month. So really, we're looking and making capital improvements, addressing the needs of these buildings to position them for the long term. Those evictions that started, we really had some that were drastic. We do, we'd never liked to evict. We actually have staff who work on eviction prevention. We tried to engage those folks. Ultimately, some of them didn't engage. So there have been four evictions. I cited a couple of the, the amounts that were owed were really dramatic. But we have had 19 people enrolled with our eviction prevention. Gave you the statistics, I believe 13 have now addressed any issues. Three are in repayment plans, and only three are with a lawyer. So really, working to help people maintain their housing. The local home park presented some challenges. The local homes are very energy efficient and have not really operated as originally modeled. So we worked with Efficiency Vermont to get all of those systems up and operating so that they're performing as they are modeled. We actually installed remote monitoring so that our maintenance crew can check remotely if there are any reports of any issues. Monitor, diagnose, to really limit emergency calls and keep things going. Also be able to act proactively in case there are indicators that things aren't performing. Those are all operating really well. We also have all of the systems on a really strict maintenance regimen, which they've never had. So changing filters, cleaning filters monthly to keep those units up and operating. Two, there were a number of abandoned homes in the park. We worked with V-Trans and the state housing authorities to have a rehousing program to remove abandoned homes, upgrade lots, and there are three new homes in there currently for sale. Two of those are actually under contract. One is working with our homeownership center and is actually a renter, not in one of our properties, but a renter on Main Street here in Hardwick, so becoming a homeowner of the new home. So very exciting to see that happen. We are working toward acquisition by the end of the year, assuming that everything with RD, that RD cooperates. And just wanted to highlight some of the other programs that we offer. In the folder, all of the things that our homeownership center offers. So we offer both pre-purchase counseling and financial literacy training. We help a lot of people buy houses. We have a home repair program, so that's a combination of loans and grants to homeowners who are typically unbankable to make repairs to their homes. I like to say, you know, think of it as your stoic Vermonter, your widows, your veterans who stay in their home, and you know, there's a leak in that back wing, and they maybe close the door. And they come to us when it is an emergency repair, and that is what we work to address. So we do lots of roofs, lots of wells, lots of septic, lots of ramps, and accessibility modifications. So that's a program we offer. We administer the V-IT program, which is a Vermont housing improvement program, which are grants to private landlords. We funded a number in Hardwick, including, I think, four right on this street. So just nice to see grants going to private landlords to improve their units and written units online. And then I have information on our shared equity program, which is down payment assistance up to $80,000, or 35% of the acquisition price of a home in exchange for agreeing to share equity in perpetuity on homes. So it's homeownership under the land trust model with a covenant, and it really helps buyers extract their buying potential. And finally, I've included a program on SASH, which is supported in services at home. So we have brought the SASH program to Hardwick. What this does is this offers service coordination and wellness nursing for elderly disabled residents, both in our properties and the general public. So, you know, if you imagine someone who's elderly might be getting services from three or four agencies, there's paperwork, it's confusing. Our coordinator helps to sort of serve as the liaison between all of them, make sure that services aren't being replicated. And then our wellness nurses do things to help folks stay active, healthy, and engaged in their community and homes so that they are able to skilled nursing. So we do foot care clinics, we do classes like a matter of balance. We're operating both at Bemis Block and at Maple Street Housing, health clinics once a month for the residents. We also do a lot on food security. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Trying to give a broad overview, we're happy to be in Hardwick. As sort of a personal background, I worked for the Housing and Conservation Board, which you cited, when lots of these houses were, lots of these buildings were developed 30 years ago. So I underwrote them. So it's, it's nice to, to be able to be, continue. So it's, it's nice to be able to be, continue seeing them serve the community.
Great, thank you very much. Do we have, folks have questions?
I, I do. So the hazardous waste, all the mitigation and everything that needs to happen at nine South Main and the parcel that's next to it, it's a town parcel that we've been holding, we've been held up in, we have an option to purchase that, but we can't sell it until all of that reporting is done.
Yes, so all of the remediation of the building is done. The long-term monitoring was just scheduled today, coordinated with the state. So there will be a series of 12 wells around the building that will be drilled on September 9th. And that is, that is the rest of the mitigation.
Long-term monitoring. Okay, so how does that affect the parcel next door?
I can certainly direct you to the consultant.
I know Vermont Huts is waiting for information.
Who is, who is coordinating with the state on it. But there's, there's a plan that I know has been provided to the town as well as the state for the whole remediation and the state's approved it for the long-term monitoring.
Yeah, you have a question too?
Patrick, thank you so much. This is very thorough. I know so much more about Rural Edge now, so thank you. And thank you for adding so much about Hardwick. Just a general question of what kind of updates or collaborations do you have with other towns? Because it's new for us to have Rural Edge with so many properties in Hardwick.
You know, we're, what, I won't, I won't be providing a report this detailed every month. But I'm happy to come periodically and speak with you. You know, if there are projects that you think that we might help in development on, you know, things like our homeownership center, lots of communities we go, we're happy to offer home buyer education, classes in your town. If you think having a targeted class here. Generally, we have a class in St. Johnsbury or Barton every other month. And then the alternating ones, we move around the state. So you know, if that's something you'd like, again, if you have folks, you can refer them to SASH who you think might benefit. It was interesting, I was driving around to the properties and I was up at Slap Hill and there was a woman tending her garden and I started talking with her. She'd been there for 13 years and she started on the second floor and fell down the stairs. She moved to the first floor. I met her 100 gnomes. She left, gave me a bag of produce from her garden and we had a nice chat. But her cousin also lives there and is on the second floor. And we're relocating them to, to a different building where they can be on the first floor because they're experiencing a similar issue. So with the SASH program and our resident services, it really helps people age in place and help us find those resources. So while we're able to do that with residents who live in our units, because we know them. You know, if you know of similar folks experiencing issues in their own homes, we can help them as well.
So the, and the maintenance and everything, that's all in-house, right?
Yes.
So.
Yep, 24 hours on call.
But it comes from St. J to us?
Then we have two offices. So we have a St. J office and we have a Barton office. We actually had hired a Hardwick-specific maintenance person, but they did not last. So actually, we have our director of maintenance who's been covering a lot of it.
So it's still a possibility that we'd have somebody more local?
Yes, our goal, so one of the things we did, which was in the report, is at Maple Street, when we took over, the community room was a little sad and dated. And one thing we wanted to do was really freshen it up. So we've replaced all of the flooring in the common areas, painted. We were able to create an office so that we actually have a Hardwick property manager who works out of there. And it's also for SASH so that if they're doing a wellness screening and someone doesn't want to have it in their, in their unit, it can be in a separate private office.
And that's something that's available to the commercial tenants as well?
Well, no, that is for that building. But it is a place where our staff works. So that a maintenance person for Hardwick would be based out of that building.
Okay, okay.
Do you have a local number for, for that? Can we call that local number, that local person?
If, if you call the general number, I can give you her correct number. I'll, I'll get that for you.
Yeah.
I'd very briefly just add that as a co-owner of the property, we feel really grateful to Rural Edge for their ability to step in as seamlessly as they have. And we hope that the benefit will be felt immediately, if not already, to the town of Hardwick to have an entity like Rural Edge be involved here. And I think you can all tell by now that Patrick does go above and beyond. And that's just his, his way. And he does have experience with PHCV and is able to sort of tap into that knowledge to, to find funding and things of that nature.
Thank you, Patrick. I know we also, I don't know if anybody in the audience has any questions that people were interested. Tracy?
Just a couple of questions. So if, so who actually owns the properties now?
So the Royal Housing Partners should, should still exist as an organization and Downstreet Housing, which they will merge with, is, is serving as their administrative agent. And, and for the general partnerships, four of the six properties are owned by limited partnerships, of which EverNorth is one of the general partners, as is, in many cases, it's a single asset entity that we will take over, but it was LHP.
Gotcha. And just a couple other, so probably everybody else knows this, but so the oil, the oil tank situation, I'm guessing it's no longer on the second floor?
We no longer have oil. We've converted to propane. Yes, that was, that was a cold impact after that. I would like to do that in every building where we have oil. And certainly in our new developments, we have no fossil fuels. But since this was, it's almost 30 years old, that did, but we were able, the boilers were replaced five years ago. But we were able to convert the burners from gas or from oil to propane.
Thank you.
I have a question, is?
Tracy, can you state your name?
Tracy Anis. Is this were to happen again, is your insurance covered?
No, the, I mean, well, there's not oil anymore.
If it were to happen in, like, say another building, if we have the same situation?
So I mean, I think that's an issue for all of our partners. I mean, insurance is for everyone, a huge issue. I mean, we hear what's happening in some states. There's everything against you. And so, you know, we were able to get funding for it, but it's tapped and you're fighting for any, any money.
So why, I, why is Royal Housing responsible for it?
LHP partnership.
Why are they not accountable for anything? Why is it on Rural Edge? It happened, the oil spill happened in Royal Housing. I don't understand why Rural Edge is responsible for the problem.
It's not a matter of each, Rural Edge isn't responsible for like the fund, the money to pay it off, but they're the current property manager. And so they're the ones that are on the ground doing that work and as well in our partnerships. But other, we're, we're called the Tax and Finance General Partner and they're the managing general partner. So they're the ones that are roots on the ground and helps.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be the role. But we sort of stepped into this without having that formal partnership.
They're, they're doing LHP a favor right now. LHP, it used to be three people in an office.
Right.
And there's, there's like one person, the part-time, who's doing like reporting to taxes. So LHP has zero capacity to do, to do this work currently, as it existed previously as a parent.
So they just opt.
No, I mean, no, that's not how I read that. It's just that they're, Rural Edge has stepped in. They know that they're a legal owner in these properties. They know that they have a vested interest in, in making them function.
Yes.
Characterize that.
Yeah, certainly, we were learning things on the line about the building and the conditions.
And, and the folks at Downstreet have, as you mentioned, 260 other units to consider with their, their own issues going on. So it's a bit of a, you know, everybody's doing the best they can.
Yeah, well, it's great to hear all the strides you're making. I think it's also worth just voicing that, you know, it's also been a, I think, a pretty rough period for the tenants and especially, you know, the folks living in those buildings or, or trying to run a business and not being able to. Just, just want to put voice to that.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly, certainly agree.
Can I just, just jump into and say, we understand that Alliance was a third-party property manager. Maybe they're the ones that should have been on LHP. But after COVID, we had started to begin to recognize that Alliance maybe wasn't operating at the same level that they always had. And then they closed the doors because of health concerns. It was a small organization and I think that they were just overwhelmed and unable to continue. And again, I recognize that there were, there were issues going on, but like, like now Rural Edge has come and stepped in. And I think they're just tremendous to do the work that they've done so far. And we hope that the impact to the tenants will be positive moving forward, you know. We couldn't control the oil spill. You know, or how that was responded to. Frankly, that's all dictated to us by the state, by engineers. Like, like we don't necessarily say, this is what we're going to do today. And if it's that, they're saying you have to do this, this, and this. I don't, I think that everybody acted as, in everybody's best interest in as quickly as possible. And we know that that's impacted residents and it's so important. And we've tried to do our best to address that.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for coming, we appreciate it. Totally appreciate it. And I'm going to move us on. So next, we have, Kristen and Tracy are going to give us an overview of Act 181.
You want to help? So Act 181 was passed by the state legislature. And it's going to be coming to us in various forms. And it started with the Planning Commission. And we realized that it took a while to understand all the different components. So this is our first step. There's no question, there's no requests here. There's not a, this is what we're asking you to do. It was meant as a mini-step. I'm kind of disappointed Danny's not here because he seems to appreciate that approach.
He's sick, unfortunately, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. So Act 181 is still, there, a lot of the rules surrounding it are still being generated. But basically, it is a reformation of both Act 250 and the downtown and village center designations, which, as you know, we have a designated downtown in Hardwick Central and we have a designated village center in East Hardwick. So we have both of the components that are impacted by this. Currently, the town does have the ability to oversee Act 250 permits. We don't invoke that. But this is going to shift things a lot. So in your packets, you have the map, the general map, the larger net map that shows the whole town. And this is what NVDA calls their futures map. And so they generated this, they brought it to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission had a couple of questions on it. They will be coming to you with this map in a couple of months. So this is your.
Will it be printed in a way that you can, you can figure out which color goes with which?
No.
When they bring, when they bring it, no?
No, but they might bring you a big, pretty map. The two main areas that I'm, we're focused on tonight are the, the desert, where the designated downtown is and where the designated village center is. And so those are the smaller maps that you have. You have downtown and, and as you're looking at them, look at the shades of pink. That's what we are going to be focusing on for the most part. Dark pink, dark purple, and pink. Those are the three areas that get impacted by the language we're going to go through. And so basically, it sets up tiers and steps. So we'll start with the tiers. It starts up Tier 1A, which is full exemption from Act 250. Tier 1A, there's only three, there's only three towns in the Northeast Kingdom that are probably going to be, are eligible and probably going to be pursuing it. So Hardwick, Newport, and St. Johnsbury. We do have two elements that we don't have at the moment, which are river corridor rules. That's, the Planning Commission's looking at those. And then the second part is this incorporation of historical content. And that's your next item, so I'm not going to go into that. So Tier 1A is going to open for application in January. And you're going to get these maps in like October. You're going to be in the middle of budget season. So that's why we're bringing this to you now in August, just to give you an overview. And we tried to put the, we worked on this presentation with the Planning Commission. And I think you guys feel like you're, you've got a hold on this. It's taken, it's taken three, it's took, took three sessions. So Tier 1A, we, we're not telling you have to apply for it, but we are making sure that it's available for the town to apply for. We can also apply for Tier 1B, which would be in, maybe partial exemption. It's for housing units, up to 50 units, I believe. And that is something that you could apply for, for the town of Hardwick, the downtown and East Hardwick. So downtown Hardwick has Tier 1A and Tier 1B eligibility, either or. East Hardwick has Tier 1A.
Can I stop you for just a sec?
Yep.
So you're, when you're talking about eligibility for different tiers, right now, you're just talking about the designated area, the designated downtown, designated village center?
Because those are the only areas that are available to it.
Okay.
So when you look at these maps, the future maps, which is what dictates it, the future maps from your regional planning commission are what, which make you eligible. The pink colors are where that Tier 1A and Tier 1B will be.
Oh, so it's not just in the designated?
No.
It's in the pink areas?
No. And a lot of the work that the Planning Commission did in previous years actually allowed for that because they'd already done the changes with the zoning bylaws, et cetera.
Currently, in Hardwick, you don't trigger, currently, like right now? You don't trigger Act 250 unless you're developing more than 10 acres, or is that correct?
So Act 250 rules are going to change.
I know, but I'm asking what's happening.
Currently, that, except that we have several properties that are, historically have Act 250 permits. Like Abasham.
Yep.
Has an Act 250 permit.
Right, and it runs with the land, yeah.
Yep. And so they have to, that opens it.
So there's, there's a whole chain. I understand there's a change, I was just wanting to clarify where we are now.
So originally, we looked at this and said, you know, there's nothing in the downtown that has the ability, nothing's 10 acres. But Act 250 is going to change.
So Act 250 is going to try to regulate more?
Act 250 is going to change. I, I, we don't know that, we don't know, they don't have the rules.
Okay, all right, so we're, all right, so we're just here, yep. We're going to wait and see what the rules are.
We're going to wait and see. We're trying to position ourselves so that we can do it if it's advantageous and make that decision. But in the meantime, you have to make those decisions. So we have, the Planning Commission has instructed NVDA to make certain that it is noted that the downtown could potentially be Tier 1A or Tier 1B. And East Hardwick could be Tier 1B, but not necessarily apply for it.
Great, okay.
It's a bookmark. It's a bookmark.
It's a bookmark, yes, yeah. So that's one component. The other component is the steps. And the steps relate to the former designations that were already in place. We are a legacy Step 3 center for downtown.
Is that really what the name is going to be?
Yep.
Just checking.
Sounds weird.
So we're going to go from a designated downtown to a Step?
Legacy Step 3.
Legacy Step 3.
Yeah, it makes you warm up.
Yeah, that's awesome, love it.
So we're not going to be required to do any other applications until June of 2034. But then, so it's separate from Tier 1A, Tier 1B, but it's part of the same act and it's complimentary to it. The East Hardwick has a legacy, is going to be a Step 2, a legacy Step 2 center. So again, it will just automatically go through.
And do the benefits of being so designated remain similar to what they are today?
Very similar, yes, yes. It would be to our advantage to continue to have those.
Okay.
But it's not a decision that needs to be made, yeah.
Right.
So we wanted to bring this to you now because when the regionals brought the map to the planning commission, a map was kind of thrown down onto the table and said, okay, so what do we need to change? And there was no explanation of what's a Tier 1A, Tier 1B, what's a step, and the rest of it. So we're trying to give you that baseline. You have the memo to read through. If you've got other questions. And I did actually write this by the regional and they felt it was well-done. So hopefully, it gives you some idea of what, there's a lot more complex. This is a very simplified version of what we've all been talking about.
Okay.
This is a good question. Thank you for pre-warning us. There, how does this impact? You know, we currently have the system that you were referencing for Act 250 and designated downtowns. And this is also a process that's happening. What happens if we're applying for grants in this interim time? Like what, does anything?
So what I, I guess you have to.
Or, or for example, like we just did the Better Connections project in East Hardwick, which hopefully will be moving on.
Yes, I love, definitely.
Is there a little bit of flux? I guess, I guess I'm just wondering, like, is there, there's not that much that's changed so far? That we have to like wait or anything like that?
No.
Yeah. I think we're really fortunate that we already went through the designation process of both the downtown and village. Because being legacy means we don't have to do it again for quite some time. We're just going to cruise on our existing designation. But if we were just, if we were going to be seeking designation after this kicks in, it's actually a higher bar. And it would be more work and I'm kind of glad that we get to put that out for like six years. But in the meantime, we just continue on with our designation. So the credit you get for being a designated center and extra points you get for various grants programs, they just continue. There's no interruption of that.
Yeah. And originally, we thought we had to address everything within the next year. For the designations and we, we slightly panicked, but it doesn't. We have until 30, 2034.
Are the future maps available online in any way or any digital format? That maybe the, just, maybe it's just me, but for me, I have a hard time lining up the colors in the legend with the colors on the map.
This is not my map.
I know.
NVDA.
NVDA?
I got that. I just wondered if you had a digital copy.
I, I mean, I have a PDF of that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can send the PDF to you guys. I meant to, and then I realized I had all these color copies from the planning commission and I threw them into your packets today. Yeah. And I, I didn't put it out to the community because it's not my map and it's, I don't know if it's done, it's.
It says draft.
It is a draft.
Yeah.
And actually, they'll be, because they're going to be working with the select board on this as their primary focus. So that's why we're bringing you the information.
Oh, you can see it. All right. Good.
I mean, for all.
Tim's going to annotate mine.
Okay, thank you, Tim. It's really tough. I took this map to the conservation commission and they had the same issue. We were trying to write all over it. But for this particular overview, the pinks, that's what you got to focus on. Because those are the ones that are going to match up and align with, with what we're looking at.
Great.
For this particular conversation.
Awesome.
And there's all sorts of other conversations about conservation and Tier 4 and Tier 3. And we don't need to go there right now.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Um, all right, I'm going to move us to item 6, which is.
Can I just interrupt very briefly, Eric? Can I just tell Joe, congratulations, you're on the conservation commission?
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the meeting.
If you'd like, you can say hi, sorry I missed the vote.
That's, all right.
It was close.
So item 6 is Select Board to Discuss Certified Local Government.
You want to take that one?
I'm sorry? Not really good at it.
Okay, try.
I think that's going in. Kristen just got through explaining Tier 1A. And that it's, I'm guessing that for the downtown Hardwick, we are probably going to want to go for Tier 1A. I, I think the benefits will be such that it's something we'll want. But I mean, that's yet, we can decide that at another point. But we don't quite have all the pieces in place. Like, we couldn't, we're not eligible this moment, as you said. We have the flood rules, right?
River corridor.
River corridors, sorry, rules. And then there's this historic context piece in the, in the planning, in community planning that they want to see. There are a couple of ways, I think, that can be achieved. But certified by local government, which is a program that's been around since like 1985, is probably the lowest, like, most easy to achieve of the acceptable approaches we could take to having this historic context piece. So we looked at, you know, various options. And this is, this is a program, as I said, it's existed for a long time. Some of the other certified by local governments in Vermont are, you know, the ones you would expect, like Montpelier and Woodstock. But then Callas is certified by local government. And Brandon, I think is, and, you know, so there, it's all different sized communities that do this. And it, I, I used to work in a department that oversees this program. So I feel comfortable that it's something we could probably manage. A lot of communities basically use it as a tool to do education, you know? So they do like walking tours of historic downtown, you know, or little publications or historic sites. You know, so you can kind of take it, there are a lot of different levels you can, you don't have to, you know, you don't have to do it all. But anyway, so we're looking at, this might be the way we want to go to get ourselves positioned to do the Tier 1A thing. But again, just in the interest of getting this before you early on and having some time to ponder.
Thank you. Yeah. Thanks for the stuff in our packet.
We did ask for a draft motion.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, she asked for a motion.
So is that draft motion essentially just a formal nod that we want to explore this?
Correct. I think you're going to have, I mean, there is not as many towns that have it at the moment. But there were other ways to pursue a designated downtown. And actually, we utilized one of those other ways. It was to say that we could look at Act 250 permits. And that is not going to be feasible anymore. That's being removed. So it's also something that if people want to have Tier 1A or they want to continue with their Step 3, they're going to need to have something like this. So eventually, this is going to come back. Even if we don't pursue Tier 1A, we are going to need to look at how to infuse the historical context into our planning.
So, but for right now?
We're just asking for permission to, we're just asking for the official nod to pursue it, to get more information.
Just keep working on getting government information. Go ahead.
Yep. No, I really would like a motion from the.
So I'll make the motion that, that we authorize the staff, Town of Hardwick staff, to pursue certified local government designation in accordance with requirements of the Downtown Division for Historic Preservation and the National Park Service.
Second.
So, okay, I mean, the motion sounds like we're pursuing it, not continuing to learn about it or compare it to other things. But so, so we're.
What would be our next step in your question? From the statement, do you have any information to look? Yeah.
So can we just, you're thinking about just changing the word pursue?
I'm okay.
We're not, we're not doing an official motion to accept it.
Yeah.
But, you know, they really want to see in the minutes that you support us examining this. So this is the easiest way to affect that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'll just say that I brought certified local government to the Select Board, I don't know, 15 years ago. And we talked about it for a minute. And then, and then I started working on the downtown designation instead.
So we lived about 15 years.
It's all going to happen. Now there's more, it makes more sense.
Now there's a reason to do it.
Now it makes more sense.
Okay. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you and thanks for being on top of all this stuff. It's all a little dry to me, but I'm glad you're on it.
I suspect the downtown partnership will probably be pretty involved in helping with whatever comes about.
You don't find that real, do you? Well, you know. All right, item 7, Select Board to Consider Joining the VT Alert System. Which I think we should probably do.
It'd be great if we could. We have the text magnet, but we have a finite number. And the state of Vermont would really like us to add this into our toolkit. And the only way we can do that and do our own is if we have an official. There is a motion, recommended motion, and something to be signed. I'm excited to take the class, actually.
I can vote, I don't see the.
The motion's on the.
But I think, I think I can do it.
Where?
Oh, this is for, oh, for the alert system. Make the motion to Town Partners up the Vermont VT Alert System as one for public safety education systems for municipal use and authorize designated municipal officials to complete training and issue alerts in accordance with public safety protocols.
Second. Discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
What, what is our commitment like in terms of like work that we have to do for this?
We don't have to do anything. We can just decide not, we don't even have to do it. We just have to take a class or even make class, a couple of.
Okay, and then like how, like, but is there going to be a point person, like if we need to send out anyone, like?
Yeah, there's a whole list.
We'll team up with a whole list. We've got me and him, we've got Chris together, all of everyone else who needs to do.
Well, okay, you know, I did see this, but I'm saying like, is there like a system that somebody's going to have to log into to make the, learn how to do it? So yeah, this, okay, so there's going to be some stuff for us to do that.
If we choose to do it, that's part of the toolkit. We don't have to. This just gives us the ability to do so. It's tied into the, it's tied into the, like, reports so you can, you can tailor it. There are some people who, there's over 3,000 people who are on this system in this area. So they really am reached out and said, we're glad you're on, that's my goal. But could you please consider at least speaking yourself out?
3,000, that's, so that's the entire population of Hardwick?
Well, I think they're enjoying region. They view us as a hub, with a region around us.
We view us as a hub too.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. More discussion? All in favor of adopting the Vermont Alert Program, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next is item 8, Select Board to Consider Reappointing Kate Brook to the DRB for a three-year term. So votes. Discussion? Oh, I need a second.
Second.
All right, great. And we still have two vacancies on DRB?
I believe we have one.
One, okay.
And we would take alternates. And then there's one alternate available, space available on the planning commission. And they're both tons of fun.
Yes. So DRB, so appointing Kate Brook. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And thank you to Kate for renewing her tenure on the DRB. Next, Kristen is up again to give the opportunity to ask questions about information given to them on work in progress.
Give you a whole folder, that folder under, under mine. Did you see this?
Yeah.
There's a lot in there.
Yeah, there was a lot.
Somehow.
There's obviously a lot.
Krista? I know it's probably like impossible to ask, but are there any major developments changed since the last update?
Um, so there is a local concerns meeting next week that you should know about. It is about, it's on the Wednesday, August 13th. It's at 6 o'clock over in the Parker Lab Community Room. It's VHB.
Thank you.
The library.
You need the translation.
Did I, what did I, I said Parker Lab, didn't I? Yeah.
Community room.
Community room.
Library, got it.
First, bottom floor.
Okay.
Okay. It is, VHB is collecting input from people on Mill Street and Main Street. And pedestrian, traffic, crosswalks, access, bicycles.
Parking.
Parking. They're going to, they're doing the scoping study. So they're looking for local suggestions slash concerns. We've been trying to get the word out to everyone who is impacted. We've mailed, we've dropped off, we've.
Oh, great.
You know, hand-delivered. Next week, 6 o'clock.
Great.
And if you can't go in person, there is a Zoom link on the website.
Okay. That's good.
So that's one. Two, we are now the owners of nine, nine people have money in their hands from the flooding, which is the most in Vermont at this point. So we've been proactive on that. They, it'll continue. The other thing is there is a watershed forum that is happening in September. And the first Wednesday, they're on Wednesday nights from 6:00 to 7:30. They're going to be recorded by ACTV and available to the public. It is, it's actually pretty amazing. They are, they're mostly paint, like multiple speakers. And it was a collaboration of different groups that brought it together. It was, we're hosting it, but this was like, this was like the C-grant and the state of Vermont and then RCD. Like, they brought together a lot of different speakers. And normally, you wouldn't get a chance to see a speaker, speakers like this multiple, among multiple situations. It's usually something you'd have to go, you'd have to go to Chittenden County to see. And so they're doing dredging rivers. They're doing beavers and natural infrastructure, which covers like wooden in the rivers. Dam removal and rivers, and then climatology and the future of Vermont's watersheds. Highly recommend it. We're trying to get the word out.
Is that going to be on the website as well, on the Hardwick website?
It's on the Har, it's been on the Hardwick website for a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
In the library.
In the library as well. Sorry. It's in the library.
In the library, in September.
In September. Yes. And then my last piece is that the.
Okay, great.
The last piece that, to give you a quick one, is, I highly recommend that you look in that folder because there's more in there. But the last one I will tell you is that the municipal planning grant for flood resilience study down in the historic, Granite Street Historic District has gone forward. We do have, we've hired SLR, we met with them tonight just before I came up here. And they will be on September 15th, I believe, doing a walkthrough and talking to people down in that area. They're very excited. We've had 25 inventory surveys done. It's a lot of excitement, it's a lot of energy. It's, it's being watched by a lot of people in the state because this is a new approach and from a lot of different areas. So if you get a chance to read through what I gave you guys in that folder, that'd be awesome. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Kristen. A lot going on.
I have one quick question. It might not be for UNICEF, it might be more for OPEZ out for the town office. But for the school street, I remember that we, that we had hired somebody to do school street work in East Hardwick?
Yep, they're still working on it.
Okay, great.
We do not have an engineering study yet.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's, it's that, the drainage on Dover Road as well, so it was expanded. It's a lot larger of a project than, it's not just fix the.
That's where I was at before, yeah.
Yeah, there's multiple engineering projects going on.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. So item 10, Select Board to Discuss a New Mobile Medical Clinic That Wants to Speak With a Select Board. And if we want to have them at the next meeting, August 21.
So basically, I put in the email there, this woman and Dr. Jessica Haddock, who's an physician in Williston, they purchased this 34-foot RV, and they're going around towns who might have challenges with health, with access to healthcare, which I'm not sure that Hardwick does, given the Hardwick Health Center. And that's why I wanted to ask, she wants to know, are we interested in talking to them? But I guess that's, you know, they'll come to the next meeting if you want to. But I'm not sure we have a problem with health accessibility. I mean, they are offering CDL exams, which I don't know if they offer that, but I don't know if there's a need for that. So all I wanna know is, do you want them to come or not?
Are they making like a pitch, or asking something from us?
Um, they're gonna tell you what their plan to do, and see if it's something that we would want them to set up. I assume it's something where we set up in certain towns on a certain day every week or something, I don't know, but they will tell us more precisely about their plan. But again, that's, that's up to you, I said, ask.
I don't think there's any harm in finding out more information.
Makes the meeting longer.
Well, but maybe that they'll, that they'll, it'll be some, like, you know, if a couple of people are able to get in and see them when they can't get in to the health center, then it's a good thing. What the, let's find out about it.
Okay. All right.
I don't know, you have to wait for an appointment, I mean, you know, a couple of months.
Yeah, you can send them to the Independent Republic. All right.
So that's all, so she just wanted to know, you know, can they come talk to you? So I guess they'll come to the, to a meeting. I don't know if they're available the next one, but they can come to a future meeting then to chat. They probably have a lot for 10 minutes, so.
Okay. Thank you, Casey. Item 11, Select Board to Review and Acknowledge Funds for Downtown Partnership from the Downtown Vibrancy Fund and Complete Municipal Letter of Attestation, which basically says that money that we get for the Downtown Vibrancy Fund doesn't off, doesn't reduce anything that, that town would give, right?
Well, it's, it's the first part as well, that the municipality supports the work of the downtown organization. And the, you know, Downtown Partnership is receiving a Downtown Vibrancy Grant funding, $25,000 from the state that we have applied for and agreed to, to work through certain deliverables, et cetera, et cetera. But, yeah, acknowledging that the Select Board supports that work is, I guess, the point that they wanna make here.
Okay. We'll make a motion to acknowledge the Downtown Partnership and sign the letter of attestation. And sign the letter of attestation, thank you. Does anyone have a second, Ed?
I need a second, Ed.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
I do have a very quick clarifying question.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, sorry. When it says annually, is that just, so this is just a part of the annual rate for-
So far, yes. It's not baked in the legislature, but so far, we've received it two different, two years, so two, three consecutive years.
Yeah, so we see this form. Do we have a clean copy of that that we're-
This one.
You got it?
Wait, I just, I just left my down, like, has everybody's names typed in, anything?
Okay, that one.
You have to sign it, yeah.
Go ahead, you can do it.
Thank you. All right, so next, Select Board reports new business, old business. Now's the time to share. Or it's time to move on. We also have on our agenda an executive session pursuant to 1 VSA 313 to discuss loan contract to include the business manager. Do we have a motion?
Uh, some votes, to go into the second session?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so we go into executive session.